Good evening and welcome to the city council special meeting of Monday, June 7th. Calling to order the special meeting in accordance with PA 254 of 2020, each member should identify their physical location by stating the county, city, township or village and state from which they, which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. So roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here in Harbor Springs, Michigan, Emmett County.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Here Oakland County, Lathrow Village, Michigan.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
And Councilmember Stallings. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, next we will do the pledge of allegiance. We have the flag, that's usually you Scott Baker. There you go. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will take approval for the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Second, is there any discussion or anything that needs to be adjusted? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Oops, I was unmute, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ferguson to approve the agenda.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, next up we have a, the public comments for items on the agenda. If there are people that's in the audience, you have three minutes to speak about something that's already on the agenda. Do we have anybody? Okay. Is there anybody? Anybody with their hands up? Okay. Then I'll close the, um, public comments. So we'll move right into the public, excuse me, the action requests for consideration of approval. First up will be the police space study updates and the next steps.
May I?
Mr. Row. Councilmembers, um, if you recall, we had the initial study conducted by Redstone Architects relative to the police space use in the building. Um, that estimated cost was approximately $1.1 million for construction and professional fees. Um, Redstone Architects representative, um, Daniel Redstone is here today to talk about the proposals for those next steps and the analysis of the building that would be required.
Good, good evening. Um, I'm Dan Redstone and I'm happy to be here tonight. I was asked to give a quick review over the next step proposal, but I just want to go back and give you just a reminder that the, um, the, the million dollar price tag on the original project, which included the construction costs and the soft costs, also had a number of items in there that were optional items, uh, that were being considered such as the live scan, if a system for fingerprinting, uh, card access control, uh, doors and so on, a commercial grade, uh, chart, electric charging station, a high security metal fences on top of this, a low knee wall fence for the parking area. So there's a lot of, uh, optional items in that million dollar budget, uh, not all of which need to be included if the money isn't there. Um, so that being said, let me just, in the original study, the, um, the city council decided not to go through, initiate, uh, an initial mechanical, electrical, plumbing, uh, observate review of the existing, uh, equipment and, uh, systems. Uh, since then, the council has also expressed the thought of expanding the analysis to look at the entire building for future expansion and renovation, not expansion, but renovation. So we've included in our, uh, proposal, getting the engineers on board and then also doing an architectural, analysis for the, uh, building code issues that would occur with a major renovation. And, uh, that would be the observational building condition review, as well as doing a schematic design, uh, which would be the initial, just really design phases for, uh, the police department, uh, renovation. And those two combined would give the city council information, uh, on what needs to be done for the building. Uh, for instance, for energy codes and building codes, you've got windows, uh, mechanical, uh, energy issues with the new building codes. The, um, wall door openings, rough structures, those things we, we do a review, uh, the electric, the elevator would be done by your elevator, uh, service provider to let us know the condition of that system. And the engineers would go through and analyze all of the, uh, visually analyze all of the, uh, equipment and systems you have in the entire building. And the schematic design would get into some detail of the walls, doors, the, the materials and specifications, outline specifications, uh, including the bullet resistant issues, the, uh, some of the other, uh, specialty items, the audio visual for the training room. And that would, uh, combined would give again the council a chance to look at and discuss with us and with the, the police department. And, uh, the, the city manager, the, the, how to correlate the budget with the costs and make some decisions. Should the city council proceed forward with the police department? And also give them an idea of what it would be required to renovate other portions of the building. So that's simply my, um, proposal for, for you to consider. We certainly would like to continue to give you more information so you can make a decision or decisions.
Council.
Uh, I've, I've got a question. Um, so Dale, let's say we go, we go ahead and, and, and do this, uh, these next two steps, you know, the, for the 27, five or so, what, what's the, what's the shelf life of the results of, of that study? So in other words, you know, if, if we were, you know, if at some point we're going to move forward with this, um, obviously it's going to take, you know, roughly a million dollars, give or take. And again, having not studied the issue in depth like I have with, with roads and other things. But I, I, my guess is, is that, you know, that the only way that we would be able to make this go as a city, given our current budget would be with a, a public safety millage to, uh, garner the funds that we would, that we would need. I question whether or not, given how difficult it was to get a, a road millage passed, and that's something that affects everybody's day-to-day lives. I, I question whether right now, if we were to do this in the next year or two, and this being a public safety millage, whether or not we would be able to get this passed by, by our residents. So my concern is, you know, I, I don't want to spend, you know, close to $30,000 to, to do a study. If that study's got, say, a shelf life of a year or two years, uh, before we would have to redo that study. If we were to say in three years, we're able to pass a, a, a public safety millage, would we have to do this all again? Or would, would that, um, would the results of, of this, you know, these studies that, that we would be moving forward with, would those have a shelf life that would last, you know, three to five years or so, um, that we could just, you know, three years down the road, if you pass a public safety millage, we can just pick it up and go with it?
So, uh, to answer your question, uh, it's, we're doing more than a study. We're actually doing the first phase of the construction documents, uh, process, which is schematic design phase. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's more than a study. It's fairly specific. Even though they're outlined specs for both the mechanical, electrical and architectural issues, it's definitive so that the cost estimator can be definitive on their projections of cost. And the, um, if we were to do this, uh, let's say between now and the end of the year, you'd have the option to consider, uh, going to the voters if you wanted, either in the spring or summer or with the congressional elections of 22. Uh, the cost projections include, uh, allowances for cost increases for materials and labor. Right now, it's very difficult because you've got steel and you've got lumber, uh, have shot through the ceiling. Steel is almost doubled and lumber is out of sight. Um, I, I do see that coming down, but there's also issues of supply chain, uh, getting materials to the site once you've even ordered it. Having said that, uh, we would put in what we think are reasonable projections of inflation or cost increases so that if we were to do it now for the end of the year and you decided, uh, let's go for, uh, an August 2022, if that was a special election or a school election, um, we present that for finishing design in 22 and starting construction in 23. And then if you went, uh, beyond that, we could add, you know, for 24, 25, add those, uh, annual adjustments to give you some idea of where you would be. And then one option, if you have any surplus, would be to put some money away, uh, in those, those years for, uh, to help, uh, start the, the fund for, uh, funding the building.
Okay. But if, if we, you know, if we, so basically what you're saying is, if, you know, if we do this study now and it's three years before we do this, it's not gonna, it's, we're not gonna have to pay another $30,000.
No, no, you'll have the schematic design ready to go into the next phases of design development and construction documents.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any, um, questions or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know if we're there yet as far as the study. I mean, we haven't really talked about the, the sticker price, which I, to be honest, I, I still have sticker shock. I think it, it's a very large number. And we haven't really, as a council, talked about, okay, what would plan B look like or what would plan C look like? We've just been looking at plan A and, um, you know, I would point to, you know, our, um, public safety where, you know, the, the crime rate isn't high at all. I mean, I don't know if we can correlate crime rate with what we're trying to do here, but I understand that we're way past due in, when it comes to expanding. I understand that, but at the same time, you know, we have to look at the number. What is that number gonna look like, whether it's plan B or C? Because plan A, I can only speak for myself. I think it's too high and I think we need to come up with a better plan.
Well, I, I think, may I respond?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think you're absolutely right. And, and by getting in the process, we would have a team which would include representatives of the council as well as the police department and the planning department. Cause I've already identified at least $200,000 of optional items, if not more, that are discussion points. Do you want to include them now? Do we want to take them out and we can add them later? For instance, the metal fence enclosing, uh, the parking, for instance. Do we leave it open like it is now? Do we, do we enclose it? Again, I'd already mentioned the live scan, uh, the electronics aren't charging station. We could run conduit out there and just leave it for a future, uh, cost. So there's at least 200, 250,000 of items that can be seriously discussed and, uh, and a consensus reached whether they are in the budget or there are options that could be added. So that, yes, we can get the price down. And that's a process of the schematic design, the thorough discussions and collaboration with you to make sure that, uh, we're on track with you.
So, so my comment is kind of similar. Um, I, I would like to have, and maybe, you know, probably should have done it already, but I'd like to have like some, just some additional time to review the, the police space study again as proposed, you know, exactly what we're doing and what that gets us and kind of compare that to the cost. So maybe we can do that before maybe the, a next meeting. Because I think before we spend any money on even this phase, that's proposed a schematic design and the building condition review, I think we need to decide whether we want to go forward or not. Um, so I, I just don't think we should spend, you know, $30,000 unless we're all in agreement that, okay, yeah, this is a good idea. Let's go forward. Let's kind of solidify the costs and, and go, and go with it. So I'd just like to have, I think, some more time, maybe this next couple of weeks or until the next meeting, to kind of review the study and then discuss it as a council, at just maybe a study session or something, right? The pluses and minuses of it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of, I, I do concur with, with Ian in terms of, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at this from, you know, the perspective of, I guess, the, 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 the gold standard, which would be to, to, you know, do a major rebuild, um, to enhance our, you know, our, our police department. But we haven't looked at, you know, what are, you know, what's, what's the option B or option C? And, you know, there, there may be other viable options as well. I'm not saying that, that, you know, going forward with this project eventually, you know, down the road, isn't, isn't the right answer, but there could be other, um, you know, options as, as Ian suggested that, that might, you know, suffice. So, um, yeah, I, I think it probably needs a little bit more, more discussion and, you know, thought as well.
Yeah, I mean, just to give a little visibility to Mr. Redstone. So when we were embarking on our structure plan, I mean, we had detailed discussions. We didn't just dive in, in one council meeting or it just ended up on an agenda. We took a lot of council meetings. We talked about plan B. We talked about plan C. We talked about rough estimates. We talked about estimates that may come in high and then get adjusted down. This was kind of like the first iteration where Bruce was actually, uh, driving it, right? And, you know, we trust, we, we had trusted the data that he was presenting to us. What you're showing us now is just the end number. You're not giving us a plan B. You're not giving us a plan C. You're not giving us, uh, in-between options where we can say, okay, let's just say you don't do the whole thing all at once. You're not giving us an option to do phase two, start with phase one, do a phase two, do a phase three over the course of five years. So for us to plop down $1.1 million to the residents, especially when we have hostile residents on occasion, it, it could get very ugly for all four of us.
Well, I don't mean to make it ugly for anybody. Uh, I think it's, but you're dealing with 3,700 square feet. To me, some of the operational discussions that you have as options are, do you, uh, do you share a facility with another department that's adjacent to you where you can share, uh, the, the physical facilities and have a small, um, I would say, if, if you're gonna move to, let's say, share the Berkeley facility and have a small facility in city hall, you may not have to do all of this. But the option, I don't think is realistic to do the first floor and then the, the lower level. It's, it's a small enough renovation that you'd probably need to do it all at once. The other options are more philosophical and operational. And I remember my experiences in the Gross Point, uh, where, um, I think the city of Gross Point, even though they had a very small department, they, they wanted somebody at that front desk 24/7 and they were willing to pay for it. So these are the kinds of discussions that I'd be happy to, to just, you know, share with you and experiences so that you are really apprised of all of the options that you have.
All right. Makes sense. So in light of everything, um, just based on what Salim said, maybe we should take a half a step just to get some time under our belt and review the proposal and then really brainstorm. Because I think, you know, the brain trust is here collectively. I think we can come up with a great plan. Madam Mayor, do you agree with that?
Um, I think that the timing is off right now, period. I think we just gave a lot to our residents and the idea of even, um, giving, um, we've already given 10,000, was it $10,000? Towards the study would be another 27, 5, um, towards the study. And then, and then it's going to be, what we're saying, 1.1 million? I just think it is, is too soon to be asking for, um, the residents to take on another project like this. So in, in the big scheme of things, yes, I agree with the three of you all. Um, but I don't know if that's, you know, at the end of this year either. You know, I, I think that we need to see what's gonna hit, or hit all of us. So as a resident, if I could take myself out this, you know, if, if I'm talking as a resident, I would be overwhelmed at this point, just to even be, to hear you consider putting something, you know, charging something else to us.
Yeah, um, let, let me just add, um, I, I don't want Mr. Redstone to think we're not, and I don't want to use this phrase, but I'll, I'll kind of coin it, bow and arrow shy. You know, I could use the other one, based on the police. I don't want to use gun shy, but we're not bow and arrow shy here. We are, you know, I mean, we're hardened, um, elected officials as well as we live in the, in the, in the community. So if it's feasible to do it, we'll, we can address it. But then, you know, we need to at least look at plan A, B and C in context and figure out whether or not it's even feasible. So that's, that's just my perspective.
Right. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with, with strategic, being strategic and strategic planning and thinking. But, um, you know, I, like you said, Ian, I think maybe talking, you know, long-term about what are, uh, you know, or over, say, over the next six, eight months, eight months, whatever, what, what the various options are. Uh, because like, you know, I, Daniel, you just said something a minute ago that I had never even thought of with, you know, sharing somebody, you know, some other, you know, uh, local, you know, like Berkeley's space, you know? I mean, that could be a solution. I mean, it may not be the solution that we want, but I mean, it's an option. And, and again, we haven't gone to that level of, of seeing what all those various options are. And I think, once we've done that, you know, maybe then it makes sense to, to, to take the next step, you know, with, with the, um, you know, the schematic and the building condition review and so forth.
Sure. So there's, there are, you have a lot of options as a city, uh, to determine how you, how and where you want your police to, uh, to operate and, uh, and do it safely and efficiently and securely for them. I mean, that's really the bottom line is, uh, keep your officers safe.
So thank you. Um, is there any more discussion regarding this? So I don't think that I should take a motion because I don't feel as though that's gonna go anywhere. So.
No motion needed. I understand.
Yeah. But I think it was only listed as discussion anyways, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it does. I'm sorry. I'm, I, at my agenda more than anything. So I appreciate it, Mr. Redstone.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll be happy to discuss it further at your convenience. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next up is the introduction of president scheduling of a public hearing starting vacation of the alley west of South Hill Road between West 11 Mile and Sunny Brook Avenue.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is the petition from, um, Bruce Cantor to vacate the 20-foot wide public alleyway east of Sunny Brook at 18129. There are two commercial properties that are but the property on the east side of the alley. And the proposal would essentially divide that, split that alley in half, one on the residential side and one on the commercial side. And if you, um, yeah, are in agreement with at least moving forward, the next step would be to, um, introduce the resolution and schedule a public hearing regarding the vacation. The first available date would be at your next council meeting, which I don't know if those plans are changed at this point or not.
And I was, I'll add to that, um, the, 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 my recommendation would be to accept this resolution, schedule the public hearing for the next council meeting. And because it does require four affirmative votes, uh, in order to move forward with it, obviously Bruce would not be able to participate, given his interest in the project. Uh, if there were not four additional council members to vote on it, the public hearing could be held, but the, the actual consideration of the resolution vacating that alleyway could be, uh, tabled until a meeting where we had an adequate number of council members to be able to make that determination. Yep. And I guess, I guess the applicant is, is, is in the house. Um, so I, I, I would take off my hat and my, my city council hat, but I've been, uh, working out all day. So the hair is awful. But yeah, let me, let me just give a quick, um, overview in terms of, of why the, the, why we're requesting the vacation. This is something I've been thinking about for many years. Scott and, Scott and I have been trying to figure out what, what happened with that property. Yeah, I think for the last three or four years, we've, we've talked about it on and off. But basically the history of it is, back in 2006, um, there was a major reconstruction process where that, where 90% of that building, uh, was raised, uh, and rebuilt from, from the ground up. And as part of that, we're, we don't know, we don't really know how this ever happened, but, uh, the, the, the 20 feet of, of public alleyway was essentially, uh, for all intents and purposes, given to the, the property owner, um, for their commercial use. Basically, the westbound 10 feet or westbound half of that alley was, was used, it was, was paved and was used for, uh, parking for the building. And then the, um, I'm sorry, I said that backwards. The east, uh, the east, uh, half was, was used, was paved and used for parking. And the west half was, was landscaped, uh, and, and used as, as, as a buffer. There was no, uh, encroachment license. There was no licensing agreement or granted easement or any formal arrangement, uh, that, that we can find, uh, between the city and the, and the building owner to allow them to, to, to do that, uh, or to, you know, give them property. So essentially, the city really vacated the property back in, in 2006. And then in addition, um, when that project took place, based on our ordinance back then, as you all know, there should have been a, a, a five to six foot masonry wall built, um, and somehow that, that never happened. And so basically the, the landscapes is really the only, only buffer that we have. Uh, and as far as that landscape goes, uh, I, I am the only person who maintains that. The business is, is supposed to be maintaining it, but, um, you know, I spend probably about six days a year, weeding, pruning, uh, pulling out the invasive species, spraying, you know, cleaning up the alleyway, raking all the sticks and the leaves because the building owner just doesn't do it and we, we're, we're forced to look at it. Um, so by, by asking for the vacation, you know, I, would give me the ability, uh, as, as the new landowner to actually maintain that buffer appropriately. Uh, and, and be able, be able to do that. Um, the city, as far as, as far as I know from talking to, to Scott and Suzie, have no, no plans to use that alleyway. It's, um, you know, there has been talk at times of linking up some of the public alleyways, but this public alleyway wouldn't make any sense because it's sealed at both ends. So on the one end, there's no egress to 11 Mile Road. And in fact, to make any egress, you would physically have to go through the Chase Bank Building, um, that's next door to, to, to the two-story building. To, in order to do that, there also is no egress to, to Sunny Brook, although it did say, I think Cheryl's introduct, introductory memo said that there was, there was, there, there isn't. And then, um, also, uh, in terms of the city not having much of an interest in, in the land, in the next five to nine years, we know that the, the, um, the Southfield, uh, Boulevard project will take place. And as you, I think you all know, that entire building would be taken over via eminent domain and turned into right-of-way by the county. So, uh, again, not, not, uh, um, a lot of interest from, from the city in, in, in using that land. I have talked to both of the building owners next door. The one building owner, uh, Richard Mandell and, uh, I can never say her name, Jin Lan Jiang, um, are both overwhelmingly in favor of, of doing this. Uh, I have talked to Noel, who owns the, the bigger, uh, portion of the building and she really hasn't given me, I talked to her for about an hour about it. She really hasn't given, uh, an indication of whether or not she is, is for or against this. But, um, you know, the, the way I see it, there, for the, for the landowners adjacent to both sides, there's nothing but positives in terms of, um, you know, they would get extra, we would both get about 1,500 square feet of, of, of alleyway. So increasing the size of our lot. So. So, but but the overall goal was really to to be able to appropriately maintain this this buffer. Um, you know, like I said, there, I actually didn't mention this earlier, but there there's, for example, there's a ten foot gap where the trees have died and and nothing has been done, um, to replace that. Again, exposing us as as a homeowner to the, uh, um, you know, to the parking lot and the noise and the light and the trash and and so forth. So, uh, really, we just want to be able to maintain that that land and and improve it and, uh, create a appropriate buffer space. So, uh, again, that's a, this is a a personal thing, not a council thing. So I'm I'm saying this as a, as a res- applying for this as a resident. Um, and, uh, you know, we've done alleyway vacations in the past, and I'm just hoping that, uh, um, that we'll be able to move forward with this and and schedule, schedule a public hearing.
So, um, looking at this diagram, it looks like the, the buildings, will they lose parking spaces?
No, so so that that's, that's, that's another reason why, why, you know, the, um, you know, the the city really doesn't have an interest in the, in this land because the the ten feet that that would go to the city, I'm sorry, the ten feet that would go to the building owners is currently all paved and is currently used as parking. So they would, they would then own that ten feet instead of just be, you, you know, essentially squatting on city land. Um, so they would own that ten feet, it wouldn't change their parking at all. But if the city were to ever to try to do anything, if the city wanted to do something with this public alleyway, you know, in in the interim, because we we do own the the property, if they wanted to use that that ten feet, those buildings would have to close because they wouldn't have the appropriate parking that's required under our zoning ordinance. So again, it's another reason why the city would never do anything with that land.
Okay.
So it's basically, I think as Scott put it in the, in the public hearing, it's basically formalizing, you know, what what actually occurred in two thousand and six. I mean, for, again, there's, there's no record of of any type of licensing agreement or encroachment. Um, you know, back in two thousand and six, yet the the property was essentially given to the the buildings to do as they please with. And and rightfully, what should have happened back then is it should have been vacated, um, as as you all know, since we've done this before. Um, and both, uh, you know, the adjacent property owners should have, should have taken over ownership of half of that land.
Okay.
May- maybe Quinn could, can give us some insight on how that happened because Scott Baker, maybe you could find out, because that
Did you ever talk to him, Scott?
Kind of unusual.
Yeah, I did, he had no, he had no recollection of it. My, um, best guess when we talked about it was probably just part, it was part of the site plan approval and it never, there, there was never an, a license granted or or if there was, it was never recorded because we couldn't find it. So I I looked through all of the old documents that we've had. I think our office started representing the city in nineteen ninety. Pam's probably the only one that knows the answer to that, but and and there was nothing that we had in our records, so I'm not sure well, how it would have happened.
And and no variance, and no variance request to to make, to to allow them not to build the wall, which is also quite, quite odd.
Okay. So there is a motion that's needed.
So I'll make a motion to introduce the resolution and schedule a public hearing regarding the vacation of the alley west of South Hill Road between West eleven mile road and Sunny Brook Avenue.
Second.
If you could amend your motion just to be to accept the resolution or approve the resolution.
Hey, I'll make the motion amended to accept the resolution, accept or approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just
Go ahead, go ahead, Ian.
No, I I just, I didn't want to take your thunder, go ahead, Bruce, but I I just have
Is, you know, as as the the resident applying for this, I just want to be very specific that I'm recusing myself from this, uh, um, from from this particular vote.
Okay, yeah, and that, and, uh, adding on to that, so we will need four council persons to be in attendance on the twenty first. Now, worst case scenario, if we don't have four, Scott Baker, what's the the next step?
So what? Go ahead, sorry, Kelly.
Nope, go ahead. You can
I didn't hear you, Kelly, but didn't
You, you can have the public hearing on the twenty first if if there are not four other council members on the action request would just, we either wouldn't be on the agenda for that day or would, if it does appear on the agenda, it could be tabled until such time that there are four other members to vote on it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Sadiqy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kanter.
I'm recusing myself from this vote.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, that's still part of that. Got too much going on. Going on to the next is RFP responses, the auditing, uh, professional services.
Mayor and council members, you had asked for an RFP for the professional auditing services, and we did receive ten responses. Um, so then I need some direction from you relative to how you want to handle the evaluation and recommendation. Did you want to set up an audit committee or did you want staff to review and offers a recommendation? How did you want to proceed?
I have a question. So, um, once we start, begin to review the options, um, will Plant Moran have the right of first refusal? Are we going to, uh, get? Why are you looking at me like that?
Who?
Oh, listen.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to wait to see what you're gonna say.
Well, you just made me crack up there. So, so obviously, you know, we're looking at, we're trying to get, uh, favorable pricing, but, uh, would it be inappropriate to give them refusal? As far as trying to meet, meet at the, uh, the market price?
Well, from the Go ahead, Scott.
No, I was gonna say, they they submitted an RFP, I I I think it would be, it wouldn't be fair to the other applicants if we were to allow one applicant to change their pricing, uh, after, after the fact, so.
Oh, they did, they did submit a RFP.
They did submit a response.
Okay.
That's the ten responses that's on page sixteen.
Okay, sorry, I did not see that. I was looking at everything.
And their response was below the average.
Yep.
Hmm, I didn't even see them on the list, holy cow, had I missed them. Interesting. All right, never mind.
Now, let's
So I, so I, so I respond, sorry.
I mean, there, Plant Moran came in, but it was fifth, but I was giving that information.
Yeah, I I could see them there, yeah.
No.
So
Six, 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 sorry.
So response to Cheryl's question, um, yeah, I mean, I think we should, I mean, I'd like to help with the valuation and I don't know if other members would, but I don't think we have to have a huge committee, but, you know, with maybe me and if that's okay and, you know, whoever wants to join in with Cheryl and kind of take a few days to evaluate and give our opinion on it. I think that would be good.
I think that the capital idea, and that's what I was going to appoint Salim Sadiqy to be on that particular, um, on that committee, because I know I'm not a, um, professional in that, um, arena, and I'm gonna take a stab in the dark to think that no one else on this a expert in that arena.
Right, but Ian, Ian, do you want to be on it as well? I mean, you were the one who initiated this whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I would, I would very much like to be a part of it.
And I would recommend that myself and Pam also be on that committee.
Okay.
Sure, that was that old brainer, for sure.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep.
But if possible, um, if we could keep to the timeline.
Yes, the timeline is identified in the cover memo, and we have to keep to it because we have to start the auditing process. So we, uh, I would try to schedule the interviews no later than, um, June twenty. I'm sorry, schedule the interviews in the coming week, really.
This week.
Yeah, you have to go through the, the way I'm reading is that you're gonna evaluate the proposals first.
Right.
So that would have to be this weekend, you know, if possible, if that could be scheduled before you all jump off and disappear, um, that would be, uh, great, just to be able to evaluate them or at least be able to get those, uh, proposals to Ian and, um, Salim.
And so we can go over the process of, there might be an elimination of some of them and then interviewing the top tier and being able to make those recommendations in time for council to consider at the June twenty first meeting.
So the, the, uh, according to this timeline, our new committee would do this, do these initial evaluations, right? Like between now and Friday.
Or as soon as possible.
Yeah, so we can do that. Uh, are you okay with that, Ian?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, we just eliminate the ones that aren't competitive. Is that what I heard Cheryl say?
Right, we can, we can do that offline, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
A consistent process to do that.
I guess I'm just reiterating that the ti- the timeline, to be committed to the timeline of it being, um,
Yeah.
Okay, this third time for a charm.
So, so maybe we can talk openly. So if we get the list, say we get it tomorrow, I will contact Salim and we'll figure out a day where we can just, even if we spend thirty minutes, you know, worst case, if we, if we can, if we can only chunk it out fifteen minute increments in the next couple of days, we'll still make some progress. But I think, I think we can have more than enough time to do that.
Yeah, and and maybe we take it, we we can discuss it more offline, but I guess I envision if Cheryl, you can send us all of these proposals or all all the RFPs, you can each kind of look at them individually and then get together as a group
Right.
and kind of hammer it out, uh, and
Did everyone get them delivered to their home?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, I have the, I have the package, yes.
Okay, good, so why don't we all look through them and then maybe we can certainly can get a time schedule for maybe Thursday or something. Cheryl, if that's okay, and Ian and Pam, and then we could talk, talk through them all and and get that list down to the people, to the ones we want to interview.
Was, was there a scoring methodology included in the RFP or do you guys have to develop that now?
There was a recommendation for the scoring included in the packet. Um, I would probably want to make one modification relative to the, um, the pricing because I I only allow for three points for the top three, but not anticipating we would get ten. So I would probably suggest that we tier them, the first tier, second tier, third tier, relative to the point system.
Okay. Yeah, sounds like a committee decision.
Yep.
That hopefully will be made by the end of the week.
So, so Cheryl, can you maybe, uh, send an invite or send a set, send a couple of dates and times that are good that we can meet on Thursday? And then we can do that, is that all right?
Yep. Well, are there times when you, the two of you in particular, aren't available?
Uh, for Thursday, I, I'm looking at my calendar right now, bear with me.
I'm pretty open, Cheryl.
Um, let's see.
I'm essentially open in the morning or like after five.
Yeah, I'm available after four. Um, let's see, I've got an opening, couple openings in the afternoon, and then, let's see. I'm available at four, I mean, yeah, 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 so.
Salim's not available till after five.
After five, Salim?
No, I'm available at four later, but I thought Cheryl was after five.
Somebody
I can make four work, so, okay.
Okay, yeah, if we can do that, and then I'll put it in the calendar.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think we still have a motion that needs to be made.
We need, do we need to make a motion for the, for the committee? Is it, or can it just be an informal committee? Or does that have to be like an official body like we did with the infrastructure?
I think you should make, you should appoint a formal committee.
Okay, all right, thanks. So I'll make a motion to, uh, create a, uh, audit review committee, uh, appointing uh, members Ian Ferguson, Salim Sadiqy, Pam Barachi, and Cheryl Mitchell.
Second.
Moved a second, um, is there any discussion? I was laughing at the fact that you appointed yourself, but, um, is there any discussion?
Wait, I appointed myself?
No, I'm saying she, uh, Ian seconded himself, but
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, well.
Any further discussion, we don't have any choice, but the big scheme of things. Mary Dunn, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Kanter.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sadiqy.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have proposed charter amendment ballot language.
I would probably defer to our attorney Scott Baker for most of this, but, um, just as a reminder and brief overview, um, the council had previously mentioned having, um, ballot language to consider charter amendments to allow for payment of property taxes or special assessments other than on the July property tax bill for either in December or multiple payments, and also to look at moving the budget dates, um, from a, an approval in May to, um, the third meeting in June.
Yeah, I guess at this point, we're just looking for if council's still interested in moving forward with this, then it, uh, will require preparation of the ballot language, uh, that needs to be submitted for review by by the other agencies, Gov- Governor's Office, the Oakland County, and, uh, yeah, let, so if this is something that the council is still interested in moving forward with, then, uh, we can prepare that and and get that rolling. I think we have, it was August tenth, I believe, is the deadline to submit it, to get it back in time for the the election in November.
Yeah, August tenth by four.
Yeah, I have another little, um, if you wanted to change something else or make an amendment to the charter, this would be a good time to do it.
Well, each, each one is gonna have to be a separate one, so, um, you know, yeah, I mean, you could do it at any time if there's something that council wants to, uh, but it would, it would be initiated, uh, initiated by three fifths, uh, resolution with three fifths votes of the council and, uh, yeah, if it's, so if it's something, let us know and we'll, uh, we'll get it going, so.
I'm just thinking that, you know, instead of doing this later while we're already having you do it, just to add some, you know, some other things that need to be adjusted, that I I think we should really start thinking about.
Such as? I mean, I think I know, I think I know where you're going with this, but but I mean, this is the time, this is the time to discuss it, so.
Um, to what to do in in the situation of, of absences.
So there, there is, there are provisions in the charter currently dealing with absences for, um, either elected officials or or appointed officials. Is there, are there some modifications that are necessary? Or desired?
I thought it was kind of of a vaguer side, it wasn't like if this, then this kind of thing. And I mean, I have to reread it again, but, um, what was sent to me, it just didn't seem like it was, you know.
Can you send me a copy of that?
I'm looking
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for it right now.
So it it's part, it's under the duties, powers and duties of council, uh, in the, in what happens if if, uh, there, you know, section six, what is it, uh, six point six? I just had it up because I was just reading it. Um, so council can order compo- require compulsory attendance at a meeting, and if if a council member doesn't, fails to appear, that could be deemed as kind of like an office and a basis for removal. Uh, that's, that's one attendance provision, uh, in the, in council me, or in the Uh, in the, in council meeting or in the charter, uh, the other deals with uh, missing. Uh, or unexcused absences. If it's four meetings in a row that are missed and unexcused. Uh, then that is a basis for removal as well. So I guess just kind of curious what. Well, it might be about what, what would council like to see, or what would council uh, feel would be appropriate for that?
It, it might be that that's, that that's fine, but we just need to define what, what's excused and what's not excused. Um, and you know, what, what the, the, the timing is, you know, I mean, call, calling in. Calling in, you know, two hours before a meeting saying, you know, saying I can't make it, you know. Unless, unless there was like an emergency situation. I mean, it just, it just seems like. You know, at least for the years that I've been on council, it's just, it's just an automatic, you know. Uh, at least until, at least until the, the last six months or so, it's just an automatic, oh yeah, they're not here, they're excused. Um, and it did, it does say in the ordinance that, that if, if uh, uh. An absence is excused, in order for it to be valid, the reason has to be recorded, and we have never recorded the reason. It's always been that they've, they've been excused. So maybe we just need some, some, some more clarity, you know, and, and I, I don't. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that that would be something that would have to be in the charter. It might be just something that we as council set up as, as. More specific rules as to what's defined as an excused and an unexcused absence.
I would agree. I think that would be more of a, a cal- a council policy um. Decision or, or, because it, because it is, it's something, and you're right, previously, if the, if the council member contacted. Administrator or someone on the staff and said, I'm not gonna be available this evening. That was considered a, a reason enough for an excused absence, as long as there was some advance notice that they weren't going to be there. Um, but you, but you're right, I, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be spelled out in the charter, but that, that could be part of the council policy. What the expectations are uh, for council members, that, you know, there's a certain. Number of hours required, you know, with, with the exception of an emergency situation, but uh, you know, in order for it to be considered an, an emergency. Or, I'm sorry, for, in order for it to be considered an excused absence.
I think we're past the, the four unexcused absences right now. Am I not correct?
You're not correct. I'm, it, it, there, there's only been, I think there's only been one unexcused absence.
Good.
Um.
So say there, sorry, say there is a uh, basis for removal, either through unexcused absences or misconduct. Uh, what's the actual process for removal? Is there a vote?
Yeah, so. So if, if there's a basis for removal, uh, there's essentially, there would be a hearing held by the city council. Or the council member that was facing removal would have an opportunity um, to provide cause. Why they should not be removed, and then it would be a, a majority vote of the council members in office. Um, not including the one that's subject to the removal, that would, that would determine whether or not they were to in fact be removed.
Yeah, so Kelly, why don't, why don't we? Try to, in the next, I, I mean, in the next, in the near future, just try to come up with what those rules are for an excused, unexcused absence. Do you think that makes sense?
That makes perfect sense. I just wanted to know, I mean, that's clear for me, because then, whereas my question is, don't worry about it. That's what my, the, I mean, the answer to my question is, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so. We are to the point of where we have a suggested action to do for the charter amendment.
Well, I, I guess the, the question I have, we really have, we kind of got off on a tangent, but I mean, I, I don't, I, we've talked about this before and I. Personally, I, I don't see that there's anything, any reason not to do this. Um, I don't know how others feel.
Well, that's what you can figure it out through the motion, right?
Yeah. Well, I guess, I guess if the motion gets a second, then we will know that, and voted on, that we know it's okay, but yeah, we're.
I, I see no um, reason not to.
The motion or, no, we didn't do the.
No, we didn't do a motion at all.
I don't think so.
No, I, I guess, I guess it was more of a question. I think Scott was just asking if he should move forward with this.
I think that's a part of the motion.
Yeah, it's, I think it's on the bottom, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not, it, I know we're doing a special meeting, so, but really, this is not something that requires a motion.
Right.
More directive and, and more open discussion whether or not uh, this was something that was supported by all the council members.
Right.
Sure that I'm gonna stay on the right page, then. The only reason why we have a special election was for to do the public uh, hearing.
Correct.
Correct.
I would stop looking at the suggestion factor. I told you, I read what's in front of me, and so that's what I'm reading what's in front of me.
Yeah, Ron Burgundy, we forgot.
Um, but can someone send me the, the part of the charter regarding um, removal?
Sure.
Well, just to, go to Munich Code and just, just.
Okay.
Carter, it's right there.
Got it.
It's, it's section five point four.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Bruce will send it to you. Okay, so um, yeah, I, I take it as to move forward, um, Scott.
Okay, with both of them?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, 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 yes. Um, so next up is the. How, council meeting venue, and that is why I am here today. That would be the introduction for you.
I got it. Mayor and council members, as you are well aware, um, since I guess March of last year. Um, you've been meeting remotely due to the um, COVID nineteen pandemic. And authorization by the state for public bodies to hold remote electronic meetings. With um, the latest changes based on the um, the rulings from the state. Indoor gatherings are permitted under certain um, conditions. So I needed some direction from you on if and how you wanted to resume um, in-person meetings. And what the mayor is referring to, she is presently meeting with you in the conference room. And there is a monitor where she is using, she's using that as her um, display of the meeting information.
Wouldn't say I'm using that for the display of the information. Playing around with it, but the concept is there.
So we're trying, we're in the process of making accommodations to the space, so that um. In the conference room as well as in the meeting place on the second floor. If there were public in attendance, they could be spread out um, throughout the building a little bit more so, so they wouldn't. Not all have to be gathered in the council chambers. Um, so we're making those um, changes now. As well as um, getting ready to order some equipment so that meetings could be held in the community room. Where you could be spaced out as well, or any of the meetings could be more spaced out. Um, we have to make some modifications to the sound system so that it's more clearly heard. So I just needed some direction from you on how you wanted to um, have your meetings in the interim. So you can go to in-person meetings, which some communities are, or you can um. Postpone having in-person meetings and continue the remote meetings for some period of time, which a number of communities are doing that as well. Um, many are extending those um, remote meetings until August or September.
Is, is there, is there a deadline um, in terms of how long the remote meetings can go on, except by the state?
Scott, at the last interpretation that I had was as long as we had a local declaration of emergency.
Yeah, that hasn't changed, um, to my knowledge, so as long as the, there's a local uh, declaration of emergency. I, I would, and again, I think that this is probably gonna see some more permanent legislation by the end of the year, but as of right now, it's still. We're still relying upon our local to, to make that, um, to hold these meetings remotely.
Yeah, I'd like to stay remote, because uh, I need to get past the vaccination process with uh, my teenager, so. Um, just want to stay as safe as possible at this point.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree. Um, I mean, the, 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 one of the things that bothers me too is that if we go back to. Regular meetings, you know, then, you know, the, 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 the rules are that, you know, people who are not fully vaccinated. You know, still need to wear masks and so forth. How are we gonna know who's vaccinated and who's not? And, you know, that just becomes an issue.
Right.
Plus, plus, you know, like Ian said, you know, there are people who have children who aren't vaccinated yet and, and so forth, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I, I guess I would be, would, would, wouldn't mind continuing them on to September as well.
I agree with that. Although, I would say, as long as we're, as long as we're in conformance with rules, I would be okay with having. Public meetings, but give people the option, if that's possible, of dialing remotely. And I'll probably just dial it remotely, but I wouldn't.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want it as a whole of people from having public meetings allows is in accordance with all the rules and regulations.
Yeah.
And so you're saying along, like if, um, like for instance, today for me being here and everyone else is on Zoom. Like that, I think that that is um, better.
Kelly, 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 can you repeat that? There was a lot of background noise and we, we lost you for a sentence or so.
He's trying to make us feel guilty.
What? No, I'm not. I can't, I mean, no, I'm not. I, there's a plethora of reasons why I came in today, so. I, I think that we should have where it's a hybrid, especially that we have things that's coming up to have um, public um. What, public comments on, and so if you can have it where, you know, you can watch it live here in the, you know, lobby. Even though we might not be here, you know, doing it, but at least is accessible to whoever wants to come up here. Or have a television set up in, you know, the, the um, um, community room. But we might not physically be here. I think if we did hybrids like that, even though, you know. I think that that's what works, because I'm in agreeance with you. I think most people that are wearing masks are the ones that are vax- vaccinated, but that's my own opinion.
Right, no, I think, I think that's, I think that sounds like a good approach. Basically gives everybody the option. Um, and if people want to come to a central location, you know, they, they can do that. And it's kind of the best of both worlds, I guess.
I think that's a, you know, my two cents on that with, with some pretty big items coming up this summer, I think.
Yeah.
Giving people all the opportunity to make their comments heard uh, is, is not a bad thing.
Absolutely.
I think the one criteria is that um, you, as the council member or the public body, have to be able to hear everyone who is speaking. And everyone who's in the audience needs to be able to hear what you're saying. So we're working on making that happen. I guess you will call it the hybrid situation, so um, it's not in effect yet, but we're working on it.
Okay.
So um, I, I would say the guidance that you got is that we want to stay um, doing, using Zoom. But we also want to um, find out or continue looking into how this can be set up. You know, or maybe you can get people to sign up, who wants to sign up to be maybe in this room and have one computer there, or you know.
Exactly.
Or one of us to agree to come here with the computer or something, you know, um, so. Yeah, we could just keep working on that, but in the meantime, we're still gonna um, do the remotes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any further? Questions, anything? Okay, good. We're gonna move on to the American Rescue Plan.
If you recall, we're anticipating receiving approximately four hundred thousand dollars from the federal government through the state. Um, sometime soon, um, they had initially said the first installment would be May-June. I haven't heard anything further in regards to the disbursements. The guidelines are starting to be rolled out and um. One of the things that we need to do as a local community is identify what are the items that are eligible. That we want to have um, those funds applied towards, and I included, I'll, I'll call it the wish list. From now, that's um, already started to be generated, but do you want a process relative to actually making um, some recommendations? To council for your final consideration?
I would like to see a process, because that's a lot of um, I think, rank, choice voting. That was for you, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, and I think if that came, you know, if we did something like that. Because I'm looking at this and that, it's, I mean, some of them, it's hard to.
Well, you know, I, I mean, I, I agree with you, Kelly, but I, I, I think one thing that I think we should pull out of that, and it should be our first priority. And maybe people agree, maybe they don't, but um, I, I think we should, you know, fill the holes i- in the budget for the shortfalls due to revenue loss. That should be our number one priority, and then with whatever's left, we can do, you know, some of these other things, but I, I definitely think we need to shore up the budget. Um, so that we're not dipping into the uh, the, the general fund like we've had uh, last year and this year for the first time in probably decades.
Right. I agree with that, and whatever's left over, I mean, I, I'm, I'm partial to uh. Infrastructure improvements still, because to be honest, um, Plan A did not pass. And it would have been cheaper to go with Plan A. I mean, this is me on my soapbox. It would have been far cheaper to go with Plan A. Because as we recall, um, Bruce came in with a number that was an estimate, and he did say it was gonna be lower, and it was lower. And it was not voted on. I mean, it was, it was rejected basically. So then we went to Plan B, which is significantly costly. And I think the residents need to realize that, so you know, with all of this, you know, fighting to, to prevent council from. Really making sound decisions, we basically shot ourselves in the foot. By um, overextending us with Plan B, which costs more, and we did less road, basically. And, and so I, I would, you know, recommend us um, after shoring up the budget. Would try to use it for more infrastructure, because we've got a lot of roads that really need tending to.
Although I don't, I don't think we can use it for the roads. I think it has to be water, sewer.
Oh, water sewer, yeah.
Still, the, the, the bond, you know, the, the, the bond issue that we. We did that we're also going to augment with water and sewer funds, so I think its total was roughly around eight million dollars worth of work. Um, it's still only a drop in the bucket in terms of what we need, and of course, it's, it's not sexy, as we all know, to spend money on those kinds of things. But it is necessary, so that's, that would definitely, definitely could be a priority, I would think.
I, I would disagree. It is sexy, because you look at California, they're losing water day by day. Because of their drought, this is the second year they're having a drought. If you're watching TV, you're watching the news, you'll see what's going on out there. My sister lives out there, and it is absolutely horrendous. Yeah, we're surrounded by lakes, but that doesn't mean anything. I mean, water is a vital resource from now until, you know, the end of time, pretty much. We've gotta try to shore that up. And any leaks in our system is unacceptable.
So as I was saying, I think that we should do a choice rank um, voting um, and uh, then go by, go from there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I didn't mean to, you know, tell Bruce that water is sexy, but I needed to make that statement.
Hey, hey, teach his own.
So how's that uh, rank voting gonna work?
I'm just joking with that. I'm just saying that you would go through and rank your, uh, you would rank what it is and what your.
I mean, I would be looking for, you know, Cheryl to probably just put together her recommendations for us.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
I think that that's a lot. I think that you should just get a spreadsheet, have these written down, and you put your numbers in it, and then we figure out from there. And I would be willing to say who has the highest one, and those are the top three, and then we could figure it out from there. I try to take as much as possible off her plate.
Okay. So if there are items that are, are not on the list, and you wish to share them with me to include them on the list, let me know.
Okay.
So we're good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, next we have the police department, mental health, social services, resource.
This was the item that Councilmember Ferguson requested to have as a discussion item.
Okay.
I guess you want me to start discussing?
That would be helpful.
Usually how it works.
Okay, um, well, you know, I've been talking about this for a while, so um. You know, at every turn, you know, our um, police department is usually the first line of defense when it comes to everything. Including um, you know, mental health issues with residents, um, including um, just in general. And I, I believe that we should at least try to, you know, number one, help residents by having some sort of. And I I believe that we should at least try to, you know, number one, help residents by having some sort of uh, access to someone who who can deal with mental health as well as also partner up with the police department. And I'm not sure what that looks like, but I know plenty of cities have now shifted because they realize that, um, you know, being a police officer is taxing and it's, it, you know, in some cases, they have to be everything from social worker to, you know, cat catcher. So I think in light of, uh, what's happened with the pandemic, with the great deal of stress that most residents have gone through, I think we should seriously entertain the thought of having some sort of social worker on site and or on staff or on the police department staff. So that way, if we do have some sort of, uh, run to a residence home, which would only entail a social worker, I think we should try to entertain that. That's that's just my observation.
Cheryl, do we have any type of mental health or social worker access, you know, through the police on a consultative basis? Or, you know, on an as needed basis?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. Uh, I'm just not personally aware of it. I the one I I'm familiar with is, um, people who are victims of or survivors of sexual assault. And there's a nurse practitioner service that's available for those counseling services. Um, I think through Haven.
Yeah, Haven has advocates for. Even has advocates for for any sort of survivor of any sort of violent crime, um, domestic violence, assault battery. They they have, um, resources available, but to my knowledge, I don't think there's anything specifically for social work um, that they could defer, an an agency that they could defer to as a first responder.
I guess the Plan B would be, um, do we have any officer that's on staff right now that that has gone through a level of the academy that entails social work and or, uh, well, they all go through human behavior, um, courses, but any sort of social work that's been extended uh, through the academy.
And I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, they they definitely have some, some of the same training and skill sets, but they're, I don't, as far as like mental health diagnosing ability, I don't, not aware that that's offered in the academy. It the biggest issue that, and I and I don't know if Chief McKee is on or Sergeant Zhang, but the the big issue I think that they would run into with something like that is, how do you make that determination? Who who's going to respond to what call? Um, you know, the ca- call might come in as a a neighbor here some arguing. Okay, is it someone that's having a a domestic disturbance? Is it, you know, I guess, you know, and it's not a bad idea to have someone that they can consult with, but I just don't know who would make that decision. And then, you know, obviously time is of the essence for a lot of these calls. You know, where where would that that individual or those individuals be available? My concerns.
Right. I would think that, you know, any call that comes in, the police would obviously respond to it, but to have access to a social worker to say, okay, it's, it's not a a process. It's, this isn't a call that escalated. It basically would require someone to consult with. And my suggestion is let's try to have someone we can consult with.
Yeah, I I I agree with you and I just, I don't think that we could, I again, I'm I'm, I haven't researched this in detail, but I just, my gut is that I, uh, being a small community as we are, I don't know that we could afford to have somebody on staff, you know, like you suggested, but um, if there was a a way or if they're, you know, given in light of all the things that have happened, the craziness of last year, I I got to imagine that there are some, you know, consulting services out there where where, uh, you know, if we do have a call where there's, uh, where some type of social worker or, you know, mental health professional is is required that they could be dispatched. I don't, I don't know if that kind of thing exists, but um, if it does, I mean, that would, I think that might be an avenue to look into.
The chief and he did indicate that a number of officers are certified in crisis intervention and they do, they do have access to resources. And also want to mention that, um, through Oakland County, uh, when I was there years ago, they had the diversion program, um, to try to keep the mentally ill out of the pathway to, um, incarcerations, um, because a lot of the people there aren't, they're necessarily because they committed a crime, but because they had, um, mental health challenges. So there are some organizations and supports, um, resources that are available, um, in those situations. And probably, uh, if it's an ongoing situation or escalating, um, looking at it at the county level would probably be more appropriate than trying to do it as a single community.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, it's it's all about access, trying to, you know, give our residents access when something like that comes up. And that's all I'm bring, that's why I'm bringing it up, because we want to be able to, you know, fulfill that need.
Yes, and the chief just confirmed that the diversion is still an option. And I think the county started the mental health court as well. So, um, there are some resources that are available throughout the community, um, and, um, Councilmember Ian. First, and I want to thank you because I think it is going to be a growing problem, especially the summer. People have been kind of confined for over a year and now they're coming out and not necessarily acting appropriately or may have lost their social interaction skills. That's the way I can say it. So, um, we're probably going to have more encounters.
Yeah, you know, I've been thinking about it for a while because, you know, I kind of anticipated, you know, some a level of violence that's increasing in all of our communities, as well as, you know, the increase in suicide rates. I mean, that is, you know, it it's really concerning to me because, you know, we lost a lot of people over the last year and a half. You know, whether it was, you know, with the with the virus, whether it was just stress in general and just illness. Because, you know, when you're under stress, illness tends to creep up faster. And we're not out of it yet. And I think we should really entertain trying to get some level of resource from from the county, whatever they can provide, so we can say, hey, listen, Laker Village, we didn't forget about you residents.
Gone trying to at least gather the information of the resources that are available and disseminating it so that those who are in need have easier access to.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think that's. Huge void though, right now in that, in that line. There's, you know, there's a lot of demand for services and I'm not a lot, not a lot of service providers. I know that, uh, you know, personally, many of them are are overbooked, a lot of patients, and it's, it's a big area that, and I think you're you're spot on uh, in what Cheryl's saying too, is that as people begin to emerge, uh, we transition back to somewhat normal life. It's going to be an adjustment for a lot of people and it's going to be very difficult. So, um, yeah, trying to find resources is is definitely a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I I agree that we should try to identify the resources and who the, who or what they might be. Um, but also let's, I think we should look at what other cities are doing. Ian, you mentioned some cities have have taken steps to to do some of this, like bringing, you know, uh, bringing in social workers or or that kind of a person as a as a first responder or with, along with the police in certain situations. I think we should look and assess what other cities are doing and see how it would work, because, like I think Scott said, how do you evaluate? Who would answer the call? But I mean, if some cities are doing some of this, uh, implementing parts of the, of what we're talking about, then let's kind of figure out what cities are doing and how they're doing it. And so I think it's important. I think it is very important for you guys have all said it, it's going to be an issue. Um, I think it's good to have that as part of our response team, you know, not just the police force, but also some mental health professionals. Um, however that might look, I think we got to really investigate it and figure out how we can get it to work for us.
Yeah, and I know, I know, uh, Scott, Scott McKee does this, but, uh, just make sure that we're taking uh, advantage of all all possible training opportunities for our existing work, our our existing police force. Um, I know just from the reports that I see that that, you know, he does a good job of that, but just stay on it.
Yep. Okay. I mean, I'm willing to call around, no problem. Cheryl doesn't have to do that. I'm willing to do that and, uh, see what I find. If I don't find anything, then we can, you know, entertain talking to Oakland County and see what they can offer, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Frozen. One second.
Yes, you were frozen.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, anything else on that?
No, that's it.
Well, thank you. Next is the capital improvement program and street projects update.
Okay, I'll start off with the the bonds and then I'll let Suzie step in with some of the others and we might go back and forth. But, um, the bonds did close successfully on June first as scheduled, uh, with the roads receiving the five point eight million and the capital improvement bonds receiving five point seven million. And the road work, all the work is pretty much underway. Um, some of the work is entering into what they're calling phase two. And Suzie, are there any other details you want to share? We've been updating on the website. Uh, second round of letters are about to go out to the residents who are going to have the street improvements.
I, yeah, the, uh, I say, I would say the biggest, uh, the biggest thing right now is, uh, going to be garbage coming up, um, with, uh, Wiltshire and, oh, and Scott's here if we need him, so. Um, I'll let him chime in too, if he'd like. Um, right now, when Wiltshire and San Jose are, uh, they're close to, uh, garbage pickup. I imagine this is the headache I'm I'm waiting for. Um, he, Scott put together a really awesome, um, little map for us to use, um, for consolidated garbage, uh, pickup. Um, I think there's a half a dozen different sites that we had out there. The the intent was to make as many people, um, give as many people the option of, uh, putting their trash out, but it's, uh, safely without having to cross the road, but that's not going to happen, so, um. And really, the the next big one is is continuing on with those excavations south of six ninety-six. Um, like Cheryl said, reminder letters are going to be going out hopefully tomorrow. Um.
Can I, can I ask a question about that, Suzie?
Sure.
Um, just because there was a, there was a big, long, uh, villagers thread on this, but, uh, the, the, all the residents who have excavations receive, who have imminent, uh, excavations, receive letters, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Every single one. I, uh,
Yeah.
It was the, i- in fact, all three hundred fifty residents who were, who were receiving those couldn't be on that list. They all got them. Um, so they've all been reminded, but they're going to get reminded again.
Okay. Yeah, that's that's, that's what I figured. I I figured it was a issue of not seeing the letter and, yeah.
Well, and I went back out, you know, I mean, that went out at the beginning of May, so I died. I don't have anything from May, so, I mean, for my own sake, you know, so I, I I imagine that most residents probably tossed it.
But I think also that if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, that, um, they were also informed by someone coming to their door.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. In most cases, uh, someone comes in advance as well as when they're there. The crew is knocking on the door because they would also like to conduct the interior, um, investigation of the materials as well while they're there.
Right. That's what I suspect. I just wanted to make sure.
Most often what I'm finding out, um, is that if there's someone else in the household, one person opened the mail, they didn't tell the other person.
Yeah. That happens?
It appears.
Yeah, just an observation, um, and maybe, I don't think Suzie, uh, maybe Bruce can answer this. Or Scott Wrangler? It looks like Scott's online, right?
Scott's online too.
Yeah, so, uh, I bugged Bruce a couple of days ago regarding, um, a street that was done and then, you know, we had some you know, slight defects on the corners. And the reason why, you know, I was kind of unofficially inspecting these streets is because when Lathrow, um, several years back, there were some defects and we tried to get those fixed and it never got fixed and, um, those defects became, uh, cracks, larger cracks, which is what we're living with now. So what's the the process by which we, uh, inform either Scott or Bruce? You're not a part of that. So what's the process? Do we email, um, Cheryl to say, hey, there may be an issue on one road that just got completed? That needs to be maybe reviewed or or, you know, adjusted or repaired?
So Ian, I'll take this real quick. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I just got a new laptop, so I was hoping it was working.
Loud and clear.
So is what you're going to end up with, Ian, is we call it edge cracking. Because the asphalt is a flexible pavement surface and it's unconfined at the edges, meaning there's no concrete. There's no curb there to hold that asphalt tight. So as you get vehicles that drive near the edge of the road over time, that pavement's going to pull apart, which is going to cause a little bit of cracking. So generally, and that's what I think a lot of it, what you saw in Lathrow, it's considered edge cracking. Uh, you really can't fix that. The best thing we can do is keep sealing up them cracks to keep the water out. Uh, I think that's the little spot that we ran into there on Glenwood. Uh, you know, in in fact, I think that cracking was on the existing pavement. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yeah, and as far as process goes, Ian, I think it would just be the normal process we use for anything else, you know, email Cheryl and C C Kelly.
All right, thanks.
Hey, if I could give a quick brief update on the road paving.
Yes.
Yeah, please do.
And I think we're starting the fifth week here. Uh, the group one streets are substantially completed, which means, uh, vehicles can use them for their intended use. About the only thing left on them streets is we still got to do some jetting of the culverts and landscape restoration. Uh, you know, there there's a little bit of a punch list out there. My guy Andy, who's our lead inspector out there, has that punch list. Uh, group two streets started last week. San Jose has been excavated and stoned in and should be rough graded by now. Uh, Wiltshire is excavated. I believe they're going to start stoning that in tomorrow. Uh, they started removing the asphalt on Al- Alhambra today. Uh, the goal is to have all three of them streets ready to have the first lift of asphalt by the end of this week. Uh, and and as, we tried to push that so we can get, one, them residents back on the street and two, they can start seeing a Barbara next week. Uh, so hopefully seeing a Barbara early next week, they'll start ripping that and start, uh, excavating that and basing it back in.
I definitely don't need a barber.
I, it was very interesting trying to get out of my neighborhood today. I must admit, trying to get up here because every street that I would use was either a completely excavated or the trucks leaving. And so. So though. Yeah, I mean, though I am very excited, I was like laughing because I finally just, between, uh, trucks, the excavation and garbage this morning, I ended up putting my car in park and just sitting there for a minute because it was a lot going on, but.
I can honestly say that Lather Village has first world problems.
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and you know, I I think, you know, I don't hear a lot of the resident issues, but it it sounds like the residents have been really good.
Yeah, I have, I haven't heard any issues.
I could send you a couple of threads to make you change your mind.
No, thanks.
No, it's totally cool. Totally cool.
Yeah, I would agree, especially with the road construction, the, um, the excavation and the yards, well, you know, that's a little more personal, so. Not as happy about that, but it is what it is.
Um, so next up is going to be the sidewalk. I walk.
Yep.
Well, Scott's still here, I think, but, um, we're entering into phase one and the, um, walking the beat, um, assessment has been completed. He has issued the RFP, those responses, and the bid opening will be June seventeenth. Um, so if, hopefully we'll be able to actually have the approval, uh, and award of the contract to the city council at the June twenty-first meeting. And the, um, projected start date is August seventeenth with the work estimated to be completed October eighth.
So is what is what that does, it gives a a little bit of time from when the city awards the contract to when we're going to start construction. It's about five weeks for the residents to be able to replace their concrete, uh, privately. So we feel like it gives them enough time to go out, get some quotes, find a contractor, and if, you know, if they so deem they can replace the sidewalks, uh, themselves.
Makes sense.
And then council recalls, we um had the modification in our ordinance that allows for them to enter into a, I think it was a two-year payment plan. What the payments do in December of each year, and if the payment is not made, then the entire balance will be going through the special assessment process and placed on their July tax bill.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Next up, cannabis marijuana update.
Well, so we had our open house on the twenty-sixth.
Roughly.
We had, well, we had approximately a half a dozen residents. Probably another dozen or so industry folks and um, and realtors representing um our property owners uh with lots of questions on what it means for commercial property owners, so um, I talked to probably about half of the residents. Um, some of them came straight in, listened to my little spiel and just angrily shoved a comment card in, and I think I know, I think I know what their thoughts and feelings are on that. Um, we are, we have not gotten a lot of um feedback uh through comments or emails. All the information is still up in City Hall, um, in the hallway. Including the comment card out there, so we've been posting it, um, all that information online and and letting, letting residents know as much as possible that we're still interested in hearing what they have to say. Um, we are not going to have a public hearing on June fifteenth at the planning commission, but we are gonna have as a separate item on the agenda, public comment specifically for cannabis. Uh, and then we will have that public hearing on July twentieth for the zoning ordinance uh language. And then we have you scheduled to have first readings on the twenty-first and a second reading if you so choose on July twenty-sixth, so. That's it in a nutshell.
And as of today, we have not done any approvals for anything.
Nope, we have no approvals for any sort of cannabis use. And your, and your sunset provision or your moratorium is still in place until September.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? Ian, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, um, so there's nothing else? We can go to public comment if there's anybody in the audience? I'm gonna assume there's none. Um, mayor and council comments.
No.
So here's what I'm laughing at, is that I received a letter via my text message and my phone just died, so.
Received a letter?
So, so, so much for reading it verbatim.
So I will remember and I will submit it and make sure that I read it next time. I cannot believe that just happened to me. And I don't have one charter on me. However, it was um sent to me today and I, and, and, and I felt bad about it, I, I sincerely do, uh, because I know how passionate um Donna Stallings is about the city of Lathrop Village and how passionate she um was about uh being a, a councilwoman. And today she did give her resignation to uh, to me um, to resign from council for personal uh reasons. It goes into effect immediately. The letter was dated um, May thirty-first. And um, there was so much more in the letter.
It was a very, it was a very nice letter.
It was, it was um, and I promised to read it verbatim and I feel horrible that I cannot believe my phone died this early.
Bruce, do you have a copy of that letter?
I, I don't. It was sent, it was sent to Cheryl, so we'll, uh, to uh Kelly, so I guess we'll have to read it on June twen- on the June twenty-first meeting.
Holy cow.
And again, it's because of personal um reasons, I really, I, I, I pray that uh she stays well and everything um goes well for and um, you know, keep. Or any prayers, I guess, so. That is what's going on now. Um, and as a council, um, we need to figure out how we're gonna fill her seat. Whoever, um, or however, I'll give you the one option is to appoint someone, well, yeah, to appoint someone and that person fulfills the, the, fills the seat until November. And then, you know, you go into election that way. You could also do it where people could submit their name and resume and we can do it, you know, that way and kind of, you know, it's totally up to council on how you would like to fulfill that.
Right, and just, just to remind everybody that it's, it's our role to, similar to what we did with uh Saleem when there was a resignation, you know, we as council are the ones.
Similar to an extent because Saleem was still different and that's where Saleem, we based that off of the last election.
Right, but my, the, 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 I, 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 I agree with you. The, the point I'm making is saying it's.
Getting to what, so people don't get caught up in what you were saying regarding how Saleem was because Saleem um ran against someone and he was the next highest vote rec- getter. In this situation, the reason why we cannot do it that way is because no one else ran.
Right, but the, but the, but the point is regardless of whether Saleem ran or not, it's council's responsibility to, the point I was making is that it's council's responsibility to pick the replacement. It, you know, it doesn't, it, it, we, we're more than a hundred and twenty days out, so we have the, we have the ability to replace that seat. And, and it's our, our choice. It doesn't, it doesn't go to a special election or anything like that. That's, that's the point that I make, so. Yeah, so, and so, so, so when Saleem was appointed, we as council at that time made that decision to appoint him and our reason for doing that was because we had just had an election and he, he didn't, he wasn't one of the winners of the election, but he was the next runner-up and so we appointed him. So.
Just, just to clarify what you said, you're absolutely correct, Bruce, but you said we have the option to fill that seat. Because it's more than a hundred days, y- you have an obligation to fill it and it has to be filled within sixty days um, from, from when the, the resignation was provided. So you have, you essentially have until your end of July to fill that, that vacancy. And then that seat will remain occupied, as you said, until the next, that, that individual or whomever would like to fill that seat would have to run at the next regular election.
Right, my, my, I just used the wrong, wrong choice of words, that's what I meant.
And what they're running for is the balance of her term, so I'm not sure.
Correct.
So, yeah, so I guess we have to figure out what, what process we wanna use to, to fill that vacancy.
Okay, so we don't have a process to fill the vacancy?
Well, the process is, we, we have to make the decision among the four of us, but how, Kelly said, how are we gonna do that? Are we gonna make an appointment? Are we gonna take applications? You know, what, what are, how, how do we wanna proceed is, that's I think what Kelly was getting at. I don't, words in your mouth, Kelly, but.
So yeah, that's what, I mean, and the thing about it is, that's not something that has to be decided today and tonight. They can be, um, you know, you can think through it. I just, I'm, I can only stress for it to be extremely, uh, I don't, I guess I don't even need to say it, extremely fair, diplomatic, all that good stuff.
Yeah, I think since, since nobody else, you know, ran, right, so we don't have the, the next highest vote getter, so I think we just all have to put together a short list of who we think is a good candidate and then talk it through. You know, the next study council or study session or something.
And mind you, this is someone who's only filling it, was that for eight months that we figure out? I think it's eight months.
Not even, not even, because when, when we appoint them, it'd be a little bit more than four months. If we appoint them, a hundred and twenty days is roughly July fourth, roughly. So, yeah, so, so I mean, whoever we appoint, it's, it's completely, completely temporary because they only serve till the November election. And it would be, it would be similar to what happened previously, uh, Saleem. Um, when you ran and you, you filled Frank's seat, so, so i- i- if this, at this coming election, there'll be four new council people. There'll be two people who'll get a four-year term, one person who gets a two-year term and one person who gets Donna's two-year term. Based on the number of votes that people get.
So based on that election, when do the, when do those people start? Isn't it later, like in December or something? No, they started January.
Sworn in, in the uh third, the third, excuse me, the third Monday in December is when they would be sworn in.
So this person who we did choose is gonna serve until December?
Right, no, yeah.
Till November.
Yeah, no, November, you get sworn in, right?
The first meeting, first regular meeting after the general election.
Right, in November, right, exactly.
Right, and if that person that, that we appoint happens to, you know, at, when we appoint them, say, oh, well, then I'm just gonna run to try to finish out the term. They would run in the election like any, like, like I'm gonna be doing and you're gonna be doing and who else, whoever else, Jalen, I think is another one and.
Okay, so are we having a special council meeting to discuss um the criteria for selection or uh, maybe Scott can explain that to me, cuz I, you know, I know we have to make a decision.
That's what we have to decide, you know, we have to arrange and decide that.
That, that would be, that would be a discussion I would have tonight and, and make a decision if possible on, on how council wishes to proceed. My recommendation would be uh that you accept applications for a period of time from any, any individual that may be interested. Similar to what you just did, filling the vacancy in the planning commission. Uh, review those applications and then the, the mayor could make a recommendation to the remainder of council. Council could then vote on that, that recommendation.
Truthfully, I really believe that that is probably um the best way to do it. Um, I know that it might drag, you know, it might be drug out for a while, but honestly, I just think that, you know, that's my opinion, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to sit through this for another hour before my next call to hash this out. Forty-five minutes.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, you know, like, you know, Saleem suggested, uh, you know, everybody giving a, a list of pe- of potential people, well, we could just talk to those people and have them apply. I mean, it's, it's, it's not really all that different.
Yeah, that's fine.
So what, what if, what if we said, I mean, is, is two weeks enough, Cheryl? To take application or I should, I guess, guess I should throw it out to the council. You think two weeks is enough for?
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we wanna be back at full strength, we can't, we can't belabor the, we can't extend the uh, the process. Can't make it a lengthy process.
No, you have, you have sixty days to make your selection, so.
Right, I was gonna say, it's not a really, it's not a rush per se. You still have two months to figure this one out.
Yeah, okay, but are we gonna take the two months?
I don't know, I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, why, why don't we, why don't we start out with, you know, getting applications and see where that takes us, you know?
Yeah.
Maybe make them do, what's today the, what's today, the seventh?
Seven.
Make them do, make them do the twenty-first and we'll see what we get. I mean, that, that could be good too, because if we get, we, we do, we have a study session on the twenty-first, so we can discuss the people who apply.
So you, you want us to use our regular application form or just have people submit their letter of interest?
So the one thing that I would definitely say within this situation is um, still use the same, this is my opinion to everyone else. Use the same um application, but a resume this time.
Is required.
Required for this, yeah.
And if I could suggest, although I, I understand it's not required by your charter that you officially accept the resignation and vote on that, just so we have it on record.
I didn't read the letters. I mean, I don't know what that, that looks like. Scott says my phone was dead, but she did send me the information and I don't have it in my email.
So I, under the, uh, Cheryl's correct, under the charter, um, technically, the, the letter of resignation should be filed with the clerk and then the clerk is to notify the administrator, the administrators to notify council. There's no formal acceptance of it. I, I would, it wouldn't be a bad practice to do it. Um, however, I think that we could do that once we had council members actually have her letter in their possession um, to take any sort of official action on it. Again, it's not required, the, the effective date will be the date she put on, which I believe you said was May thirty-first, so. Yeah, that kinda starts the clock ticking as far as filling the seat.
So they would have their sixty days from May thirty-first?
Correct, yeah, from, from the date of, the, the effective day of the resignation.
So did we do it that way with former Mayor Brock when he tenured his resignation?
No, we just, we just chose Saleem because he was the next, the next highest vote getter.
No, what I'm saying is, uh, did we read it into the city clerks?
I don't think.
We did not do that. He didn't, he tenured his resignation. Did we actually forward it to the city clerk?
Well, he actually, he actually did it at a live meeting and uh, we adjourned the meeting, signed it, died, it was, there was a, a bit of a proclamation that went with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, it was, and, and again, I think we should do the same thing for, for Councilwoman Stallings.
Yep, I agree.
Recognition of her years of service to the city, so.
Yeah.
I think that would be appropriate at the next regular meeting.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
And I will say that is what I told her that I would, that we would do at the next meeting also, so I guess I forgot to tell that part too. So.
So let's take applications.
I, I strongly um support that, taking the applications, have it where it's requirement to um send in a resume. I would say that they need to be in no later than um, the seventeenth, and the reason I say that, that's what, ten days to do that, and then they'll give us all time to have them all and we're not scrambling for the twenty-first to go through them.
That makes sense.
And the seventeenth is what, Thursday, next Thursday? Yes.
Yep.
So how do we advertise this? Is there a requirement? Are we posting it on our website?
All the usual places, put it in the e-newsletter and then I think, I think really the, the big advertisement is gonna be the four of us. You know, people that we know who we feel will be qualified candidates and, and, you know, ask them if they're interested and see if they'll apply.
Right.
For anyone that's already running. Which obviously, I'm only talking to one other person, um. Fill this position, cuz you can't double do it, but um, you can still put your name in, but you still have to run in November, just, you know, wanna make that clear.
Yeah.
So Scott, just for clarification on the posting, this is for a specified term ending.
Yeah, this, this appointment ends the, the Monday after the general election, because whoever, whoever there's, in addition to Bruce's seat, there's now an unfilled term that needs to be on this election. So the unfilled turn, uncompleted term of Donna needs to be filled at this election. So someone will run for that and will obtain that seat. It, it may or may not be the same individual that receives the appointment.
So someone, this is for the clerk um clarification. So someone seeking to fill the unfilled portion of her term has to run specifically for that seat.
Well, that's, uh, uh, maybe so, but that's not, I don't think that's how we did it last time. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. I think what we did is, is we took the, the top two vote getters and they got the four-year term and then the, the, that left two, two-year terms left. And then the next two people got those, got those two-year terms and one of them just happened to be assigned to, to that, that term.
Go ahead, Scott.
Clark explained it.
The statement, but also a question.
Go ahead, Evette.
Um, I'm trying to remember, but um, council member Siddiqui did run for the unexpired term of former Mayor Brock. On your petition, it will ask you what term are, at the top, the term in which you are filing for. And the person can, may or may not run for that term. They can run for the two four-year term, but her term is two year, two years as well. So if they decide to run for her term, it has to be specified on the uh. So if they decide to run for her term, it has to be specified on the, um, petitions.
So let me ask you this, Evette. Does, does that mean that?
Identity as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I just talked over you. Sorry about that. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, and on the affidavit of identity as well. So you do have to specify.
So does, does that mean, so, so for example, you know, I, I'm, I'm running um, in, in this November election. So, so I'm, I'm only running then based on the, the application that I turned in for, for one of the, the two, two open seats. Well, I should have the, the three open seats, but the fourth seat, I would have no possibility of getting that, that remaining term seat.
Unless you ran specifically for that seat.
Right.
So, so I guess, so, so I guess point of clarification, if, if, if I wanted to increase my likelihood, could I also submit an application to run for that, that vacated seat?
No, you have to do one or the other. Your
Okay.
Petitions, I'm looking at them right now. You're running for the, uh, four-year term. And what Oakland County Election Board will do is specifically look at how many votes everyone is going to receive and place you guys. And place your terms according to how many votes you receive. So whomever is going, yeah, unless you specify for Councilmember Stallings' unexpired term. Then on the ballot, it will say.
It should, it should appear on the ballot as a separate collection. There'll be, there'll be, there'll be one question with names for the three terms that are expiring. The highest vote getter gets the four-year, so on, so forth. And then there'll be a second um, unexpired term that needs to be filled and an applicant can apply for that. I, I'm not positive of that. I think that, I think that they could run for both. Uh, the issue would, would be is if they were elected to both seats that they couldn't, they couldn't fulfill. That's a Joe Rosell question.
Yeah, yeah. Our role.
Bruce has served both seats. No problem.
Bruce doesn't want both seats.
Unless they do two sets of nominating petitions. I don't know if they could do that. I don't know. But.
No, they would, they would have to do a second nominating petition, but I'm, I'm not sure that anything precludes them from other than the fact that if they were to get elected, I'm not sure in both places how that would be handled.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I believe that you can, because I want to say, well, nevermind, I'm not going to even say, I believe you can, but if you could just check with Joe Rosell.
Heck, because in looking at the affidavit of identity right now, you have a choice of running for regular term or partial term expiring. So if you do two sets of paperwork, I'll see if that's, if you can do that. I'll check with Oakland County. I've not run into that yet. Okay.
Yeah, that would, that would be good to know. And I guess.
It did happen, and I forgot what, uh, what, uh, position was for, but I'm not, I recall it did.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good to know. And then I guess, yeah, I, I just, just thinking through the permutations. I mean, what happens if, if, so right now you've got, uh, Jalen and myself, you're running for the four-year terms and I assume that's what Saleem is going to be doing as well. What if, what if there's nobody running for specifically for that term? Then, I, I mean, I guess, yeah, I guess there's just a lot of different possibilities in terms of what could happen.
So if, if nobody ran, it would be deemed vacant and then, um, it would, there would be an appointment.
Yeah.
I think Bruce keeps forgetting that I, I'm up for elec- reelection.
Oh, that's right. I, well, have you, have you stated one way or the other yet? So.
That's the last, I'm the last man standing from, um.
I'm just chopped liver. I mean.
Kind of like, kind of like me at the last election. I was the last person standing, but, um.
So I will say this, just for, to be on, um, record that, remember that this is a non-paid position.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we meet twice a month, um, regularly. But special meetings do come up and there is still, you know, uh, expectation. Um, you know, for all council people to be at those special meetings also. And as if you have been a part of this recording since the beginning, you'll know that we're also working on what it looks like to be absent from council meetings. So just, you know, it's, it may seem like it's fun and games as we all, four of us have, have her doing this. However, um, you know, it is something that we're doing because we care about the city and there is no payment at all for it.
Yeah, we know that.
I wasn't, I wasn't really saying it, thinking it to be recorded, so there, no.
So, so, uh, it, it hasn't, well, put it like this, it's been very tough during the pandemic for all of us, uh, more so than ever, more so than any other council have experienced. I can say that because the, the stress level has been very high. I, I can only speak for myself. And, uh, judging by the conversations I've had with other council people, yeah, the stress was very high for them as well. And, uh, coupled with the fact that we couldn't really see each other other than on a Zoom call, we couldn't really expand any ideas to, you know, just get creative. We couldn't do anything. It was just like, okay, we get on this call and we talk about things that we typically could talk about, you know, before getting in front of camera to kind of make everything work right. But it's just been, it's been very stressful, I have to tell you.
So, um, just, you know, that, that was basically, I guess, that's all, uh, in a nutshell. Um, if we could send something out saying you have until, uh, Thursday, June seventeenth, to have a application in your resume in, and we will review it on Monday, June twenty-first. That would be a review. And then, you know, at that time, perhaps, um, a special meeting or something to that extent. Matter of fact, I know it will have to be a special meeting because I don't think that I'm going to be here on the nineteenth.
So give those dates again. Applications due in when?
So the applications would be due by next Thursday, June seventeenth. Close of business. We, that would give us Friday, Saturday, Sunday to review them. And we will review them, um, together on Monday, June twenty-first. And then technically, we would make a decision at the July nineteenth meeting, but I will not be here for the July nineteenth meeting.
So maybe do it as a special meeting sometime before then.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I hope somebody got that. It's recorded. If you didn't, play it back.
Uh, July twenty-sixth is our regular meeting. Sorry.
July twenty-sixth? Wow.
Kelly just said July nineteenth. It's July twenty-sixth.
Yeah, well, we could always, we could always turn our July twelfth meeting, you know, study session into a special meeting. And that way, that way.
Okay, for July fourth. Okay, got it. Right? That's what opened me up. Okay.
Yeah, so July, July twelfth, we could potentially do as a special meeting.
July twenty-sixth, a pretty big meeting. I think we should have everybody there. Yeah, full council.
Yeah, so more, 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 uh, credence to doing a special meeting on July twelve.
Well, we're gonna, we'll, we'll figure out what day we can do it.
Yeah.
Because I just want to make sure that everyone's there before we, let's do one step at a time. So, uh, um, yeah, because maybe we could even do, do it by the end of this month or something.
Yep.
Alrighty.
Okay, so, uh, quick question regarding, uh, the twenty-first meeting of June regarding the, uh, vacation of the alley. We do not, we will not have a quorum to vote on that.
Right. But as Scott said earlier, we could do the public hearing and then we'll probably have the table, the table to vote until we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, you, or you don't, you just don't even put the resolution. That's already going to be a pretty busy meeting. So, um, we could just put the resolution for vacation on the, uh, July meeting or meeting when we have a full council.
Well, the public hearing notice has already gone out, right? So we'll do the public hearing at, at, at the twenty-first, but.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, we don't have to deviate. I, I, I'm just bringing it up. I, I would, I didn't want to change it. I mean, let's do what we said we were going to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any, anything else? Is any other, um, council person have a comment for the greater good?
Um, let's see. Thought I had one, but.
Well, while you're, while you're thinking, I'll just reiterate what Kelly said and thank Donna for her six years of service and, um, hope she's doing well and, um, I'm sure we'll, we'll, we're sure we've not seen the last of her. So I'm sure we'll, we'll be in touch. So good luck to her.
Anyone else?
I had something. I'm actually looking here. Sorry. Got so distracted off this thing. Um, oh, yeah. So, so, uh, for the, for the, um, the sidewalks. So obviously we'll know what that price is. Per, uh, well, the residents are going to know what the price is for sidewalk replacement, right? Um, do we know when we're going to have that, you know, that price per square or whatever? So they can kind of maybe assess and go get another quote somewhere else?
Well, that, I, that'll be a part of the bid document, right, is the, um, the, the cost per, per sidewalk flag. Uh, so once, once you've, uh, awarded the contract at your meet, hopefully at your meeting on the twenty-first, uh, we will get letters out to residents with an estimated cost of, um, what they'll be responsible for for those sidewalks.
Yeah, if you look, if you look on four page forty-one of the packet and there's a, a step-by-step, uh, process showing the day, all, all the different dates. So.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on forty-one.
Yeah. So down, down it says note residents have five weeks to complete their own repairs.
There it is.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all, all the questions I have. And, uh, let me just say it was a pleasure working with, uh, Councilwoman Stallings. Uh, I wish her nothing but the best as far as health. And, uh, I hope she's going to be okay. And, um, we will, uh, you know, just officially, um, send her off at the next meeting. And, uh, I just wanted to again say I appreciate working with her as well as, uh, partnering with her over the last several years here. It's, um, it's been a challenge. And at the same time, uh, we've had a, a measure of success that we can point our finger. Thank you.
So I just want to, uh, say really quick also is that I never, I, if I made it seem like it was a health issue, I'm sorry. I, I, I don't want to make that a, a, assumption. So I apologize for that. If I made that, if I'm making you make that assumption. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the cause?
Oh.
Were you going to mention anything from the earlier meeting?
Oh, right, 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 right. Whoops, whoops.
You're right. I forgot.
Hang on for another five minutes, everybody.
Yeah, uh, we're gonna, um, uh, we talked with Cheryl today regarding the evaluations. And, um, unfortunately, we really only got one. I think Saleem by mistake, uh, might have sent in a, uh, blank one. So, uh, Cheryl is going to send out, um, um, there's some, we talked through what her proposals were with, which, uh, Bruce and I didn't have any, um, you know, have any issues with. Um, Cheryl, do you want to go further with that?
Well, there, there were some, um, language changes and some, um, economic components to the negotiation, which I can send to you by email. And then the confirmation or your consideration can be on the June twenty-first agenda. Do you want me to go into the the individual items?
No, I mean, I think that what you can do is send it to each, um, council person. So they can look over it. Um, and then we will vote on it on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Yep.
That sound fair, Bruce?
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think Cheryl, what, what might be helpful for the others is, is also, you know, the, the table that you, I think you had sent Kelly and I, like, for example, showing that, um, you know, severance, you know, for non-cause for, for most cities is, is about nine months where it's only six months here. So I think just this is kind of the same information you sent, you sent us, you know, justifying it. Because as, as Kelly said, I think all of your requests, you know, seem to, seem to make sense and they seem fair.
Okay. Well, good.
Now.
I think, I think Ian just fell. Oh, sorry.
That's what it looked like. So, um, anything else?
This is a reminder, my birthday is tomorrow. I will not be in the office.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy early birthday.
Remember, we had a meeting next Monday, too.
We do?
With Attorney Stephen Schwartz.
How did that get past me?
Yeah. Do we really?
Don't have that in my case. Monday, the fourteenth.
Oh.
Cheryl, Susie also, I, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make the, uh, the Southfield Road meeting because I'm going to be, I'm going to be driving, driving home more than likely at that time. So.
When is the Southfield Road meeting?
That is, uh.
One o'clock tomorrow.
Hmm, okay.
Does he have a plan to be at the meeting unless the celebration starts early? In which case you'll have to handle.
No worries. No worries. So I am, um, you know, is there anyone, anyone else have any comments?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to close.
So be.
Second.
You guys, you said second, Saleem?
Yes, yep.
And if somebody could open the door. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.